Teacher voice.
He flies in from Europe tonight. We're gonna have a couple.
All right, at this time, we are going to close the public hearing on the district-wide safety plan, and we are going to move to our reorganizational meeting. At this time, I'm gonna turn the floor over to our board clerk, Ms. McDonald, to get us started.
Hello. Um, so I have already administered the oath of faithful performance to Curry Jolliker and Jason Miller, but I do need to do that with Eric right now before we proceed. Before we could just sit up and raise your hand. I, Eric, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution and to the Constitution of America, and to the safety of the citizens who live in our education. And I swear that I will support the Constitution and to the health and security of all Americans.
I do. I thought you were gonna have me repeat all that.
No.
I thought that too. Yes, my place is off.
Thank you.
So I'm now going to call the meeting to order. Number one, if we could all please stand for the pledge, and I would like to ask you permission.
I believe this is.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, we're now gonna move to roll call. Troy Anderson.
Present.
Padraig Bean.
Present.
Dwayne Bebo.
Present.
Eric Deauque.
Present.
John Fairchild.
Present.
Christopher Gadway.
Here.
Curry Jolliker.
Present.
Jason Miller.
Present.
David Trudeau.
Here.
All right, now for the approval of the agenda, resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion, present.
I'll second.
And second, John. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now going to move on to nominating the president and the vice president of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations for the president of the Board of Education?
I'll nominate Patty Bean.
I'll second, present.
Are there any other nominations for the Board of, uh, any other nominations for president of the Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the Board President? So we'll do roll call. Troy Anderson.
Aye.
Padraig Bean.
Aye.
Dwayne Bebo.
Aye.
Eric Deauque.
Aye.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Curry Jolliker.
Aye.
Jason Miller.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Yes.
Padraig, when you get back in town, you just need to stop in the city so I can swear you in.
I can do that, right?
Okay, perfect.
Listen.
Um, so now for the vice president, are there any nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education?
I'll nominate Troy Anderson. Second.
Who's second?
Curry.
Are there any other nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education? Are there any other nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education? Roll call, Troy Anderson.
Stand.
Padraig Bean.
Aye.
Dwayne Bebo.
Aye.
Eric Deauque.
Aye.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Curry Jolliker.
Aye.
Jason Miller.
Aye.
David Trudeau.
Aye.
I'm going to administer the oath now. Raise your hand. I, Troy Anderson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education according to the best in my ability.
I do.
Just sign right there for me.
Blue.
Yeah, please. And I will give you the gavel and turn the meeting over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Always wanted the gavel. I'll never get it in my lifetime, but.
You have it now.
Yeah, right.
All right. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, first, very briefly, thanks so much for your vote. I very much appreciate it. And on behalf of Padraig, who's on, online, thank you for him as well. We have a new board, a new superintendent, um, new vision coming forward, our strategic plan, planning, and a new school year coming at us. So, uh, we've expected nothing but great things in this past year, at least from this board, and we'll continue, I think, to, our expectation is high, and aspirations are high as well. So hopefully, you know, we'll keep the ship steered in the right direction and work hard to achieve our set goals. I, I didn't, I thought June, I wasn't here in June, so please let me welcome, um, Curry Joll, Curry Jolliker, Eric Deauque, and Jason Miller to the board. Congratulations, gents, on your, um, on your appointments. Um, with that, forgot where we were. Yep, all still in, in four. Yeah. Uh, two appointments, resolved that the Board of Education appoint Ozzy Comer as ex officio student board member effective July 1st, 2024, and ending on June 30th, 2025. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Motion, present.
Second.
David.
David, second. Any discussion? I'm sorry?
He does a good job.
Oh, yes, yes, he does. I think he believes his senior year. All in favor? Aye.
Right.
Motion passes. Resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person.
Motion.
Motion, Fairchild?
Second.
Second. Jolliker, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Sorry, Padraig, cut you off.
Oh, you're all right.
Gentlemen, with that, I believe we will, uh, go to executive session. Time is 6:27. And, uh, be back here shortly, hopefully.
Asking you shall receive.
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, we are now back on the record. Uh, the time is 6:52. Resolved that the Board of Education return to regular session, the time is 6:52. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Jolliker, second.
Sir.
Uh, Gadway, second. Any discussion, gentlemen? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I, I'm sorry, very quickly, um, I was remiss in some of my earlier comments. I just realized that today is the, I think, the first official Board of Education meeting for our new superintendent. I was thinking it was June, but it's today. Is that correct? Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, for the record, and for anyone who would read these minutes at home, um, I would welcome, after a very thorough and, um, I thought thoughtful, um, search for a, uh, a new superintendent, um, please, I may welcome Mr. Dustin Relation as our new superintendent of Eagle Town Central School. So congratulations on your appointment. I'm sorry if I was remiss in earlier.
Not a problem, thank you.
Yeah, I found that Mr. Jolliker, Mr. Deauque, and Mr. Miller was more important to introduce than yourself.
Understand.
I know, I'm just, I'm just kidding. But especially Curry. Uh, okay, so, uh, section six, appointment officer is resolved that the Board of Education appoint Chelsea McDonald to serve as the clerk of Board of Education during the 2024, 2025 fiscal year, at an annual salary of $5,500, within an indemnity amount of $100,000. Can I have a motion, please?
Dwayne.
Motion, present.
Mr. Bean, uh, motion. Mr. Bebo, is that what, second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Jennifer Stahl to serve as treasurer of this district during the 2024, 2025 fiscal year, at an annual salary not less than $59,259.83, with an indemnity amount of $1 million. May I have a motion, please? Gadway, motion?
I'll second.
Jolliker, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Le Saroni, or is it Saron? Anyone? It's a Saron? Thank you, ma'am. To serve as the internal claims auditor of this district during the 2024, 25 fiscal year, at an hourly rate of $25, with an indemnity amount of $100,000. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Bebo, motion, second? Mr. Gadway, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion, motion passes. Other appointments, resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education at the following resolutions on this consent agenda, be it other appointments, school attorneys, others, purchasing agent, Clinton Essex Warren Washington Counties Board of Cooperative Education Services, non-student physicals, insurance consultant TSA Plan Committee on Special Education, otherwise known as CSE, subcommittee on special education, committee on preschool education, otherwise known as CPSE, and partial hearing officer and Medicaid compliance officer be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Jolliker? Sorry, was the second? Mr. Bebo, thank you. Any discussion? No discussion? Um, all in favor? Aye. Motion, motion passes. Moving on to number, section eight of the tonight's agenda, be designations. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education at the following resolutions on this consent agenda, be it designations, official bank depository, all funds, official newspaper, investment of idle funds, Board of Education meeting dates, established miles, reimbursement rate, and school meal prices be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
John.
I have a question about the school meal prices. They're still free, though, right? This is just for the extra meal?
Extra meals or adult meals, anything like that, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that.
John was, uh, motion. Mr. Trudeau, second. Any discussion?
Mr. Anderson, just briefly.
Yes.
The Board of Education meeting dates, you will notice we put dates on them, so the November meeting has been moved to Thursday at this point in time, if approved. Uh, Ms. McDonald, we actually had a training, uh, at the beginning of the week, so we thought moving it just to the end of the week makes the most sense. And then you will notice, um, in March, we are doing the meeting, sorry, April, we're doing the meeting on Tuesday, the 29th. That coincides with the BOSI's budget vote. It made sense for us to put the meetings together.
And that's the April or March one?
April.
April 29th.
Spring break this year, that doesn't, that doesn't, that's not a relief, it's spring break this year, is it? Okay.
So we can be, spring break, I think, is the, or is it the week before?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure those were highlighted, so everyone knew what they were looking at.
And gents, usually we, um, we have, at least in my very extensive period of time of 12 months on the board, we have had the meetings in the first Tuesday, or second Tuesday, excuse me, of the month, and it looks like we coincide with that with the exceptions that Mr. Relation just pointed out. I believe I had a motion, second, and, uh, we had discussion, any additional discussion on, uh, section eight? I see no one. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to nine, authorizations. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education at the following resolutions on this consent agenda, authorizations to certify payrolls, conferences, conventions, workshops, attendance, to establish petty cash fund, designation of signatures on checks, superintendent to apply for grants and aid, advances from general fund to other funds, budget transfers on chief school officer's approval, and use of check signing device, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Jolliker? Was that Mr. Gadway? Thank, uh, Mr. Bebo, second, thank you. Any discussion?
All good.
All good? All right. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. To 10, other items. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education at the following resolutions on this consent agenda, be it other items, regulated extra classroom activity fund, cooperative purchasing, participation in the following cooperative purchasing alliances, code of ethics, transportation, credit card authorization, association membership, established temporary on-call rates, substitute, be it non-contractual stipends, for athletic event site coordinator, correction of tax rule and tax bill and cash drawer and policies, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please? Motion. Motion, Fairchild, second? Dwayne Bebo, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Sorry to hear, we didn't, we've become less enthusiastic as we go along here. Uh, motion passes. Moving on to 13? Oh, sorry, thanks, thanks, Dave. Um, public comment, board policy poll 30, public participation at board meetings. Anybody here like to take 10 minutes to public, to comment on any issue within the rules and regulations of board policy 1230? I see no hands or no movement. There are no public comment. Only once. Not Mr. Shear, no? All right, Rick. I'm just kidding, man. Um, looks like under 12, there's an audit committee meeting notes, which are technically following these reports. Anybody here that were on, at that audit committee meeting? No, it's just in red, so I thought normally we would comment on it.
Superintendent report. The non-red stuff we have to do.
A, B, and C.
Well, we have to run through 12, A, B, and C? Oh, I got you.
But there's no, no action, so it's not in red.
I was just looking for the red. Uh, reports, then. Superintendent of schools, Mr. Relation?
Sure, so just a couple of updates. First is the strategic planning process. Our committee has met twice at this point in time. First time was to review the overarching proposals. We narrowed it down. We had four candidates or organizations that we interviewed last night. Um, we've got some next steps as a result of that meeting, um, in terms of contacting a potential organization, so that's the next couple of days of working with that organization. So I hope to have more information shortly to the Board of Education and then to the community as well. This was a very extensive interview process. We, we budgeted about an hour for each of the organizations, and we took the full hour for each one. So, you know, I want to thank the committee publicly for the thoughtful questions that we came up with and the time that has been invested in this. It was from about 2 o'clock yesterday until after 8 o'clock, working with organizations. So I was very impressed with that. I'm super excited to move forward. As I said during my, you know, public presentation and my interview process, this is a plan and this process, hearing from stakeholders, is going to be very important to us. We will have to be vulnerable, but we're going to hear from those voices and be able to build a plan that can help move us forward for the next five years and beyond and continue to expand upon a lot of the great things that are happening within the district. So, you know, I keep saying I'm excited about this process. I, I can't stress that enough. Um, we are going to slightly expand our committee to be more broadly represented. Right now, we don't have support staff members on the strategic planning committee, and my feeling was that we would like to have that expanded. The committee said yes to that last night, so we're gonna expand our committee a little bit. Um, but that's the update as of right now. So, you know, at the next meeting, I hope to have more information, and it is likely that I will ask the board for a special meeting once we get a contract finalized and I work on that with the organization, that we can get that approved before the next board meeting. So just be prepared for that communication to come.
Dustin, what's the timeline on that, that portion right there?
Sure.
Do you think you have selected a, um, a company to fulfill the, our requirements?
We have selected a company at this point in time. It's a matter of connecting with that company, um, looking at the overall budget that they're going to present, modifying that a little bit, and then getting a formal contract ready to go. Some of the organizations do allow us to contract through BOSI's to get aid back, so that's an area that we have to explore a little bit further to see what those costs look like. Um, but it was nice to have some organizations who did that, because it would be some cost savings for us on the backend, which is, is very good. So I would expect in the next week to have that process kind of settled, be able to reach out to you with a further update.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Uh, next, in terms of an update, is the extended learning time grant. Um, you know, I came on last week, this is day six for me, and this has been a very big topic of conversation. On Friday, January, or June 28th, a memo was released in the afternoon about the extended learning time grant. I brought our leadership team together. We talked about what the memo states and what it doesn't state. We then reached out to our contact at the state, and I'm happy to say that based on our questions that we asked, that we are able to run the ELT grant for this coming school year, the 24, 25 school year, in the same fashion that we ran it in the 23, 24 school year.
So we're not extending Fridays yet?
We are not at this point in time. Of course, the requirements are, you know, 100% participation is what they're striving for, an additional 25% time in a school day. We're, we're working to meet those pieces. I will tell you this, we are able to run this, this coming year as we did last year. They are going to ask us to track attendance, though. So we are gonna, we do know there are changes coming, I guess is the best way to say that, but for us, the biggest confirmation piece was that we are able to run as we did in the previous school year. This is really good news. There are so many great opportunities that come as a result of this grant for our students, um, in terms of educational experiences, that for me, it was like the, I needed to know what was happening, and we were able to get that done within a little over a week, which is great. So I'm excited to be able to state that publicly tonight.
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, does that mean that we are going to be applying for the grant? Or that we have received the grant?
So we have to complete some paperwork, Padraig, on the backend, but at this point in time, we are still able to receive the funding. Um, still diving into the nuances of it, but Jen, I don't know if you want to speak further, but to me, I'm understanding that we are good to go.
We still have to submit, uh, our proposal. It's our proposal, and it's pretty much going to be similar to what we did in 23, 24, um, and submit that proposal, but yes, it, what we were told is that, yes, the money is going to be forthcoming.
And the piece that we wanted to confirm with this attendance component is that there would be no reduction based on what we're going to start reporting out. And I will be, I'll say, they have not given us how we report attendance yet either. So they're working through what needs to be done on their end at this point in time, but that is going to be the one new piece that we have to start tracking. And I will say that the message was, there will be further updates coming.
I have a question, and I'm sure I'm asking this right. Teachers' aides, can we get the extra, does it ELT grant?
They're here longer, so they get paid.
So if the day ended at 2:20, and we didn't have an ELT grant, it would make such and such number. But now for a day ends at 3 o'clock, they're gonna get extra added to that?
They, they get their hourly rate, so if they stay in.
So it's an hourly rate.
Right, so if they stay an extra hour, 45 minutes, they get paid for 45 minutes. Whatever, whatever turns out to be. Whatever length they stay in addition, they get paid for.
And, and all those funds come out of the grant, correct, Jen?
Correct.
Yep.
The last little piece that I just want to share is, you know, it's been an amazing first official week on campus. Um, I did have the opportunity, I had some vacation time in a previous position that I had to use or lose, so I have been on campus a total of five days prior to the end of the school year, which was really nice. Met with a lot of different leaders. Um, you know, in the last week, I've been walking around, and, you know, I just have to say, sometimes individuals think that in the summer, it's very quiet in the school environment, and it is exactly the opposite. Um, the amount of work being done and the ability to walk around and see, you know, our custodial staff, our cleaning staff, um, our IT staff, our maintenance staff. We're installing, I believe it's about 100 panels, flat panels right now in classrooms. Um, the, the crews that are in the classroom stripping out all of the furniture and cleaning everything. It's, it's nice to be able to walk around and say hello, introduce myself, get to know them, and tell them they're doing a really good job. Um, you know, that's something that I think is very important, and there is a ton of work happening right now throughout all of our building, so I just want to acknowledge that work. And I know I'm leaving someone out, and I'm going to say, everyone who is on campus is doing a lot of really good work right now, um, and it's, it's a pleasure just to be able to be out and about and to see everyone, and I've learned that from my office in the far end of this building is about a quarter of a mile. That's the one thing that people keep telling me as I'm walking around. So that was news to me, getting a little more exercise. Um, but, you know, as I said, with the strategic planning process, I am looking forward to a really exciting 24, 25 school year. The planning is already underway.
So I'm here, just want to make sure I'm right, sorry to keep, I'm just trying to bring something up. There's an out, there's, the teaching assistants, they certify. $110, $110 a day. Is that a set rate for that ELT?
For the teaching assistants, yeah.
For the teaching assistants, so if we had ELT, that's the same amount we're gonna get? So if we did.
That's for the sub.
That's just for the sub.
Those are subs.
To, okay.
So the aides are given certain set amount?
Aides are, are salary, they, they have a contract.
Yeah, so the extra 45 minutes.
Teaching assistants are different than teacher aides.
Okay, okay. So the extra 45 minutes, there's stipend with that?
No, no, they, they're hourly rates.
That's what I'm questioning, like, if we're, if we're doing ELT, are the people that are asked to stay extra they get paid for, asked or asked?
Absolutely. They have to do a timesheet every week. So if they're here and they worked the extra time, they get paid. So Fridays, they don't get paid extra because they're not here extra time. They're here just the regular day.
So they get four days of extra time?
Exactly, if they're here. If, if they have a sick day, or if they're on a personal day, or if, then they, they don't get paid because they didn't work the extra time. But if they work it, there's a timesheet, they fill out, and it gets through payroll, and they get paid.
Thank you. Good question, Dave. Any other comments? Mr. Relation, that was it for those three points?
That was it for me, and I know we've, uh.
No, it's okay.
Jen, Jen, next.
Yes, move on to the business manager, Ms. Parlone?
So I'm just gonna give a couple of quick updates as well. Um, all right, we're gonna, we did a brief meeting, not brief, I guess it was an extensive meeting for our capital project. We met with Schoolhouse, um, which was great. Uh, that was our first face-to-face meeting with them. They had some really, really good ideas. Um, I'm very glad they're on board. They're gonna, I think, save us some time and some money, which, uh, everybody likes to hear. So we are looking at actually a new timeframe to get things done in order to save us some money and get things done in a timely fashion. I think that they are, we're also talking about doing some segregated contracts, which I think will help with cost as well and to get things done quicker. We're looking at the playground to do a direct purchase instead of going through the GC. We're, we're gonna go state contract, which will speed that up considerably, I believe. Um, so they had some really, really phenomenal ideas. It was a starting point. Um, I do have a whole bunch of paperwork that needs to be signed by the board president, so the sooner the better, or I, I, because this is what's gonna start everything going at SED. Um, so.
Jen, I can come in on Friday.
Okay.
When I, when I get sworn in.
Okay.
And, and we can work out a time, if, if paperwork needs to be signed.
Yep, I have a whole bunch for you.
Okay.
So, so it was great meeting. Um, we're going to start doing, um, monthly meetings at this point, and then we're gonna move to probably weekly and probably, or bi-weekly and then probably weekly. Um, but the whole, the timeframe still is that we do our bids as of December, January.[1656.59] We're pushing real hard for that. And work contracts as of February and get this thing moving. And we are discussing the topic of actually doing the playground in the first summer as well. Not holding out for the second summer. The only thing that we would be holding out for the second summer would be one of the cafeterias, because we can't have both our cafeterias shut down at the same time because we're a CDP school and we have summer school. So we can't shut down both our cafeterias at the same time. So it was great meeting.
Tell you, Jen, that is, that is music to my ears.
They, they really did have some very good ideas. Um, I'm, I'm very glad they're on board. They had.
That's awesome.
Yeah, they had a lot of things laid out very nicely, timeframes. Um, we got a lot of work to do still, but um, it was a very, very good meeting. Mr. Relation was also there.
I just want to tell you, I mean, obviously like the playground thing is something that I, I, I have been very vocal about. And I really appreciate you taking time to look into that with our contractors.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm very thankful that they had some really good idea. And I think the state contract thing is a great idea. It'll, it'll move much faster. Um, so hopefully things will keep moving forward. Uh, we also had a meeting today with, about our PA systems. Um, everything's going great. They are actually um, have everything, almost everything installed over here. They're gonna start testing at the end of the week. Um, and hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have everything transitioned over for the PA. And they're starting also with the lockdown system at the end of the week too, I think they talked about. End of the week, early next week.
Yeah, I think so.
Starting implementing all of that and transferring our cameras over to our new system. Because this is the system that everything is going to be on one platform. It's not gonna be, we have this that talks to this, that needs to talk to this, and that's a different vendor, and then you gotta go to this vendor. Everything's gonna be one. Um, it, it's going to be cost-effective and it's gonna be much better for everybody involved um, um, in doing this. So um, that's also starting very, very, very soon. And hopefully it will be done as of September. That's, that's the goal. So.
Jen, your capital project, are you, I mean, obviously lots of moving parts and things to check off. But far as breaking ground would begin when?
Um, they were talking about breaking ground in April.
Okay, before school would end. And being mostly complete, at least with phase one, that by the time school started, is that fair?
Fair.
Just, just in the most general sense, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, um, they're hoping to maybe, as far as the addition goes, to have the frame and, and the groundwork and the frame stuff up. And that way they can work, that, that's what they were saying, that's why it'll save us so much money. If we can get a contractor to come in and know they have guaranteed winter work.
Yeah.
That's huge. Um, so uh, that's, that's what their goal is, is that they can have the frame and all the outside stuff up and then start working inside and be able to work all winter long.
Thank you.
So that, that's what we're.
For the most general sense, yeah. Okay.
That's about all I.
That it? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other points for Ms. Parlone? No? Uh, committee reports. Audit committee?
No, we don't have one.
Okay. Thank you, moving on.
They did have one.
Oh, did you have something, Dwayne?
I did not.
Okay.
There was an audit committee meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen.
We did our normal, we did eight, uh, no, March and April.
Correct.
There was nothing, nothing.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Nothing out of the ordinary. It was typical uh, bills and, and um, status post stuff, nothing out of the ordinary at all. I don't think any odd topics came up.
No, no audits, no audit issues.
No audit issues, no. Uh, it was, it was pretty, pretty straightforward. We, you will notice we won't have another audit committee meeting until August, the end of August, because we wait for our audit to be done. And that will be starting at the end of the month. So um, we did talk about having our next, I think it was the end of August.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thanks Jen.
Yep.
Moving on to minutes. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Be it uh, the BOE minutes from June, our committee minutes also from June that Ms. Parlone just mentioned. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Jolker, motion, second. Dwayne Beebo, second. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion pa, motion passes. Moving on to fourteen. Resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated July 9th of 2024, that's today. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Gadway, motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Any discussion, gents? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to personnel. Uh, resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, be it resignations, termination, appointments, stipends, both for CSE and CPSE, unpaid leave of absence and increased rates for part-time employees be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion, John.
Motion, Fairchild, second.
Second.
Second, Jolker, any discussion? No questions or points? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes. Give me a sec.
You're flying.
What's that, love?
You're flying along here.
Sorry, I talk fast. So if at any point I'm, I talk too fast or I've been accused of mumbling a couple of times here and there in my life, just say so. Uh, moving on to miscellaneous. Yep, number 16. Resolved that superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, miscellaneous initial evaluations during the summer of 2024, payment to attend CSE, CPSE meetings, use of district facilities, letter of agreement to Dale Tompkins, home league contest, fingerprinting, special education school age summer school, CEWW, uh, BOSI's, sponsorship agreement for the CV tech, adult education programs, and the side letter of understanding for the musical director and assistant director, side letter of understanding for the spelling bee coordinator, and school bus use for the North Country Honor Flight. It's a good program. Um, be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Dre.
Motion, Pedraic. Second. Dwayne, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 17, policies. Resolved that superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies. I'll be brief. The school district records, graduation ceremonies, code of conduct, student records, student privacy, fixed assets. These are all um, for the record and for um, any otherwise, second reading and adoption. Any just, pardon me, motion?
Motion.
I, I, I have some things to discuss about this.
Go ahead, Ms. Patty Bean.
Since, and as you're asking, do we need to motion first?
Yes.
And then discuss it? Um, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the, the, the procedure here. If there's an individual policy that needs to be discussed, we need to move to remove that from consent agenda to individually discuss it?
Motion and second and then.
I think.
It's, it's motion and second and then a discussion.
And well, I'll tell you, thanks, thanks, Sean. All, all motion and second, well, somebody, all motion, somebody will motion and second. And then I'll ask for a discussion and then we'll identify that particular policy. And if there's something here that we want to set aside, then we can do it that way otherwise, right?
Yep.
Um, so motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Jolker, second? Dwayne Beebo, second. So discussion. Any discussion on any of their six total? So um, Mr.?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead Patty, identify the one you want to discuss, bud.
So I, I'd like to discuss our code of conduct.
Okay.
Um, I, I brought this up at the last meeting, uh, I'm gonna bring it up again. Um, we use the term restorative practices inside of our code of conduct. I don't know the exact number of times, but I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it's a, it's over 10. It's, it's several times. And I have not seen anything that resembles a guideline for our use of restorative practices in disciplinary, uh, in, inside of disciplinary action. Um, we're, we're putting that out there in the student handbook and saying that this is what we're gonna do, but we have no guidelines for what we're gonna do, at least as far as I've seen. And I know that there's been training that's been done. Um, we've been told that there's been training that's been done. I don't know if that's tier one, tier two, or tier three training. Um, so I, I have concerns with the use of that language in the code of conduct and not having a guideline for how we're gonna use it.
No, thank you, any other points? What, what I, I see no, no other, uh, no other discussion. Um, so what I would suggest here is leaving code of, table code of conduct and then we vote for, on the five? Yeah, go ahead Patty.
So in, in accordance with the rules of order, we need to motion to remove it from the consent agenda? If that's what we want to do, we need to remove it from the consent agenda. Then with, that way we can vote on the other five policies.
Okay.
So I would motion that we remove the code of conduct from the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Dwayne Beebo, second's your motion, Patty? Any discussion on the removal of code of conduct, be it 5300, from today's agenda? And be tabled? Any discussion on that, other than what Mr. Bean has already provided?
Are we looking to send it back to the policy committee for re-reread?
That, that's what it would be, well, it would be further discussion and review.
And here's the thing, I don't know if it needs to be sent back to the policy committee. I don't necessarily have an issue with the language and the policy itself. It's the fact that we use that language so much, but we have no further guidelines for the use of restorative practices. So I mean, the state is very clear on their recommendations for the use of restorative practices in tier one, tier two, and tier three, in a vengeance. But we don't have any guideline for our staff to use it. So I, I'd almost like to see an additional document that is our guideline for the use of restorative practices.
All right, so you want a written guideline for it then?
Absolutely.
Well, I think it also needs to be sent, it'll be, just like we just said, Chris. It'll go back to the policy committee for review and possibly addendum or additional language, and then be represented to the board for further discussion.
Do, do we know if there is a written guideline anywhere?
So I will, I did a little bit of work with the policy just to look at it. And there is on, actually get the right page. Um, page 26 of the policy itself or the code of conduct. And I apologize, the actual document doesn't have page numbers on it yet. That's something that, you know, as a policy, we want to kind of talk about. But it does state that the restorative approach will be used in conjunction with the list of consequences outlined in the code of conduct. So really restorative practices is, is truly something to be used in addition to traditional kind of methods of, of managing expectations and student behavior. Um, you know, it, it's nuanced, but I think looking at NISBA's policy, the, the sample policy it was given, a lot of the language in what the committee did is just adding some of those pieces into it. And, and Pedraic's right, that, the word appears often, sometimes it's after like principles and then it's a list of stuff and then they'll, you'll utilize some restorative practices approaches. Um, I will say my experience is, a lot of staff do this already. We're kind of just putting some name, we're naming what it is that's being done uh, in, in many instances. Um, but I think the big thing is just, it's not replacing what we're doing. It's simply another layer at this point in time. Um, and I did dig in a little bit to what different schools have been doing. There is a lot of training that's been done over the last couple of years. I think there's always room for more conversation, truly. I do believe that. Um, but I read through the code of conduct. The committee was really diligent, I feel, in small changes to language based on what was provided by NISBA that reflected, I think, what the needs of our staff are. That's one thing I noted very clearly in looking at the color-coded pieces is that there was some really thoughtful conversations. It appears to me through my initial first read, but I haven't been here long enough to read through it multiple times or hear all the little pieces. But it appeared to me that there was some very thoughtful conversation.
So I guess Dustin, my, my question, you know, for you, I mean, obviously you, you have some experience. And I know, look, I know we have, you know, committees, they, they give a very good presentation um, at the last board meeting. Uh, and they said that they, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, if I misspeak. From what I remember, they had said that they were gonna start digging into the use of restorative practices in, in, inside of disciplinary action. My question is, Dustin, do you see an issue with having a guideline for our staff to use restorative practices?
No, I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be a challenge to, to kind of look at some examples potentially. Um, but I, I think that it'd be a good item for the committee to talk about and determine if there are any pitfalls there. Um, that would be my initial statement right now with that.
Yeah. No, I think, I think that's fair. I think that's absolutely fair. And if the, especially if the committee on restorative practices comes back and says, look, you know, we really don't think having a set and stone guideline is the best way to go about it. Here's why, I'd be very, very interested to hear that explanation.
And Patty, I, I would agree with Mr. Relation in, in that um, in my experience, good teachers do good practices and good staff members have good practices. And, and the state tends to come up with a new flashy name for them, you know? And I think, I think that this is an example of that where the state is now latched on to this restorative practices, you know? Um, which, which is their new, their new term for it. But it boils, that, it does boil down to uh, someone who is good with kids and, and is good at what they do, practices those things naturally. Um, but it is understandable that if you are not in a school environment, um, you would, you would seek out some definition to that. So I, I agree with what you're saying. And I think that's okay also.
Yeah, and like I said, please, I hope this is not misconstrued for anybody to think that I don't uh, feel that our teachers are already doing this or that there hasn't been training or that there hasn't been really good work done uh, to implement these restorative practices. I absolutely understand that that work has been done and these are things that our teachers are working on diligently. I just think for that policy to really have any teeth, we also have to hold ourselves to the fact that hey, if we tell students this is what we're gonna do, there needs to be some sort of written documentation for how we're gonna do it.
Go ahead, John.
That's it.
Being very patient here. I think we as a board are getting into procedure rather than policy. And procedure is the realm of the administration and the staff. And I think we need to be cautious of that.
No, and, and that's a good point, John. So I, I guess to your point, if a guideline was put out, in your opinion, that would be procedure, not policy.
Yeah, the details of how it's done is procedure and that's the realm of the administration and the staff to deal with.
No, I think that's a fair point, John. Absolutely, I would consider.
And I think that's something that truly we could do if the policy were to be approved tonight. It's something that I would still bring back to the committee and say, listen, this came up as a point of conversation. Do we need to dig in further to this?
Mm-hmm.
In order to more clearly articulate for staff? Because the, the biggest thing is making sure that everyone has a common understanding. Uh, because if not, that's where challenges can arise and truly challenges for students who have different expectations. Um, so there's room for that for sure, regardless, to be honest.
If, if that's the case, Dustin, and, and then I would, I would be willing to, to move it forward for a vote.
Okay, yeah, I will, I absolutely will admit to going back to the committee and saying, this is something that came up. How would you like to proceed? I, I think it's good to put it back in their hands.
I also, I, I, I hear what Patty Bean is, I hear his thoughts and, and share his concerns. I mean, so I have, I, we still have a motion on the, on the table, we withdraw that. But I would also add that we can also just take a breath here, it's only July. I mean, if this isn't approved tonight, August is our, is our next opportunity to approve this policy.
The challenge is this needs to be printed and given to the kids at the beginning of the year. So we might be time sensitive now. I don't, I don't know the printing timeline.
Yeah, what's the, what's the, is there a sense of urgency to have this approved tonight? And from, from a practical standpoint, going forward for the new school year?
It's always nice to have something approved sooner rather than later. Um, I, I will be honest, I don't know what the printing practices look like to the level that we would probably need them together um, to have this ready to go. And you know, it also needs to be put on the website in different locations so it's available to families. So I would just say that I don't have a clear answer on that timeline piece. But again, it's, I can tell you, Troy, that Saranac, ours are already ordered.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that, so, so that being said, um, in case you couldn't hear that Patty, Curry just said that where he, where he is employed, Saranac, they're already ordered. Do you withdraw, I guess formally than for the record, do you withdraw your motion for tabling the code of conduct, be it policy 5300? And we will continue on with the, as enveloped in the overall motion? Is that your, is that the understanding, Patty?
If, if the commitment is to, uh, is to investigate that further, Dustin, then yes, I have the right motion.
Okay. So motion withdrawn as to removing code of conduct, policy 5300, from tonight's agenda. And now it was, is now uh, included in the um, other policy pieces, uh, as a sixth total. So going back, I'm going to, just so the record's clear, underneath number 17, policies, I'm gonna reread uh, what we're hearing then, and then call for the motion. Resolved that superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies. I'll be brief again. School district records, graduation ceremonies, code of conduct, student records, student privacy, and fixed assets. Do I have a motion, please?
We, we already have a motion from Curry and Dwayne on that.
That was, I think, wasn't that to, wasn't that to segue this out?
No, because you can't have the pulling it until you've had a motion.
Gotcha.
So.
Ah, you're right, no, you're right, you're right. So I was, I was, I had a motion from Curry, a second from Dwayne. And I will again ask for any discussion. See no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstained? Motion passes. Thanks, John.
No problem.
Uh, moving on, 18, financial. Resolved that superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to following resolutions on this consent agenda, be it financial reports, transfers, and Clinton County Health Department, the champion stipend be and here are hereby approved. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Beebo, motion, second?
Correct.
Gadway, second? Any discussion? See no points? It's a roll call vote, Ms. Um.
Troy Anderson?
McDonald, thank you. Uh, yes.
Kadre Beane?
Yes.
Dwayne Beebo?
Yes.
Eric Deopiu?
Aye.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gadway?
Yes.
Curry Jolker?
Aye.
Jason Miller?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
Nine for nine, motion passes. Uh, moving on to twenty-one. All twenty, did I miss one?
Better than ninety.
Oh, sorry, guys, sorry. Tough crowd tonight.
No pressure.
Nineteen additional items to discuss.
Troy, I just wanted to bring something up before we get into the news stuff.
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, I recently attended graduation a couple of weeks ago. My son just graduated from here. Thank God they're all not filing for, uh, the votes, so actually. I want to personally thank Mr. Bazile, Mr. Miranda, Mr. Besson, Holly, Ashley Minor, Mr. Prichet, lawns and grounds, custodial staff, our band coordinators, the students, and I'm sure I'm leaving out numerous people. It was a great night, the weather was perfect, the ceremony went without, without a hitch, and it was very nice. So I appreciate that to all the administrators that put in that extra time. I know the kids really appreciate it. And, uh, another thing I want to add to that is we do a senior walk here where our seniors will go to Cumberland Head and they go to the elementary here. And I actually saw some pictures of it online and people have sent it for my son, like, you see those little kindergartners and, uh, pre-k, they look up to those seniors. And, uh, Mr. Prichet and I have always talked about this with sports, and I've always preached to my teams, like, these kids think you're NFL athletes, even though you're a senior in high school. And that is a great thing that we do, and I hope we never get away from that. Like, these kids, they're staring up, like Evan Dixon's like six-four, and these kids are like two feet tall, and they're just staring at him the whole way, and they have a smile from ear to ear. So I just, I'm not hearing that we're ever gonna get away from it, I'm just, I hope we don't ever, and that's something that I appreciate, because these kids look up to these kids, so. So anyone I left out, I apologize. Everybody, thank you very much.
And I'd like to add to that, I greatly appreciate the efforts of the photographer there to make sure that each of the photographs for the kids and whoever was giving them their diploma was a good photograph. Uh, he was trying to make sure people in the background were moving out of the way, but he wanted to make sure they were good. Those are memories.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, John, for your point.
We do a diploma presentation here where kids can pick who they want to give a diploma, and I think that's a great thing, too, like, those, you see, you see the people that matter to some of these kids' lives, like, and, and it's very fun, enjoyable to watch, who they pick, so I, I think we should always stay with that, that's something we should never go away from.
Thanks, Dave. So sticking with, um, the agenda, nineteen additional items to discuss. Skipping right down, strategic planning committee. I think Mr. Relation covered that, Dustin covered that very well, at least to the status.
You have a board member on that.
Just, just briefly, so this actually came up during our interviews last night.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Bean kind of stated, and I think it was well received by the committee, that we may want to have a formalization as with the other board committees, uh, so we can ensure that we're valuing this process and the committee work that's being done. So, Mr. Bean, if you want to speak more to that, but that's something we discussed yesterday.
Troy, I don't have the, the agenda in front of me, but is there a section for committee appointments in this agenda?
That's what we're doing right now.
And, and you know what? Yes, there is. So there's two bullet points, uh, Patty, strategic planning committee and then board committees with the sub, sub, uh, audit, health, operations, yada, et cetera, et cetera, underneath that. So, you know what, very quickly, to not interrupt you, let me, let me skip to the second one real quick. Um, and I, I will say that I would table these appointments, or I would make a motion to table the appointments for audit, health, operations, policy, professional development, committee of nine negotiations, and hall of fame. Just since we have three new committee members, I remember when I came on last year, it was just kind of fast and furious and sudden, uh, it was actually the second item on the list was president, vice president, committee, committee, and I think I was put on policy and, uh, and with a probably a deer in a headlight look still to this day, but nonetheless, sitting in that corner looking and saying, I guess I am, and not really knowing what I was about to get into or otherwise, and these other committees. I, I think it's wise to chew on this for, for a month, uh, let the president, uh, new elected president, uh, come back, meet with a new superintendent, new vice, and et cetera, et cetera, and we can make these appointments. They don't have to be done today, at least that is understood by the rules, and we'll make them by next August. So I, I think.
And I think on top of that, Troy, there is a document, although it's, uh, um, it, it's brief, there is a document, I believe, and Chelsea, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, you and Dan sent this to me when I first started on the board, that kind of briefly describes all the committees and their functions?
Yes, it's in the board portal.
Yep, I mean, it might be a good idea to make sure all the board members have that, you know, especially all the new board members, so that they can see what all the committees do, um, and get a good idea of what committees they might want to take part in before they're appointed.
So I don't, sure, I don't, there's no vote on this tonight. Um, wait, hold on a second. There's not.
We don't need to vote, we just agreed to.
Yeah, exactly. So I think we table this and this appears on the next, on the next agenda in August, and we'll make those decisions then.
We got a meeting.
We need a meeting.
Well, is, is, is there a meeting between now and August?
Uh, we're gonna need operations meetings, I'm just saying.
So we need, we need one body for an operations, because we, we had me and Dwayne, so we need one more for that. We're gonna need one more for the audit committee.
Audit committee will be the end of August.
So Eric Daupu will be on the operations with us.
And when's that meeting?
I don't have to schedule it, but we're gonna need.
When's our next board meeting? So August the? Say that again, someone?
It's in Aug, it's this, uh, September Tuesday, August, August.
But we're gonna have an operations committee before that.
You will.
Yes.
We need one on the audit committee, anybody want to volunteer for that?
Well, the audit, audit committee will be in late August, you said. Okay, so that's not necessary, because we'll have a, a meeting in early August.
Most of us are keeping our spots.
Well, not necessarily. We haven't any. Yeah, I would, actually.
I, I, if no one has an issue with it, Chris, you know, to your point, you know, like, uh, Prologin was saying the audit committee's not gonna be till the end of August, so that would give us time, at least from what I understand, to appoint committee members, um, before that audit committee meeting. Um, you know, Chris, like you said, you're on operations, you know, now, and you would, you'd like to keep that, you know, committee appointment, um, if you wouldn't mind attending that operations committee meeting, um, in the interim, just until we get it flushed out and the new board members have a chance to see what all the committees are and what their functions are, if, I mean, I, is, is that an issue to anybody?
Who else is on operations? Also, there's two of you, I mean, we can go one down for one meeting.
Eric already volunteered.
Oh, okay.
He's volatile. I mean, unless, I mean, unless somebody else on the board wants it, I don't, I don't understand why I gotta change it out.
Well, I don't know that we, I'm not suggesting any changes, I'm just saying that maybe we, we flush it out instead of making these decisions tonight. I mean, there are some holes that need to be filled. That's my suggestion, I mean, if necessary, gents, we can have a vote on it, if, if, you know, if, uh, or we can just kick it to August, doesn't affect audit and two people will carry it and.
Operations is one that I would be interested in being on, given my background in schools and building projects. Um, but that's open for discussion.
Then I, then I would suggest, since there are people interested, um, I would suggest we go, if there's an operations meeting happening before our next board meeting, I mean.
The existing members go to this one.
It's just existing members, that's right. Two out of three, uh, having one down is not, is not ineffective. So, uh, we keep it as is, you operate one member down, and then we make these, these decisions come, come our next board meeting. Anybody have any discussion points? Is that fair? Yeah, okay. Patty, you gonna hang that?
Anybody's open to go, you don't have to be.
Yeah, there you go.
Nine of us want to go, nine of us.
Well, you can't.
But it's a meeting.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
You can't, more than a.
You can't have more than what?
More than four is a problem.
Two extra people want to go.
Great.
Yeah. Any other, uh, any discussion on this? Okay, so we won't, so this, so we're done discussing these board committees and appointments, and now back to strategic planning committee. Uh, I cut you off, Patty, go ahead.
Uh, no, uh, what, what Dustin was saying was, and, and, and I agree, I think the strategic planning committee is, uh, that's gonna be time intensive, uh, and this was another reason why I potentially wanted to, uh, push these committee appointments, because, I mean, and Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about meeting, you know, some of these consultants were talking about meeting, you know, once a month for the next four months.
Correct.
That being said, what's that?
If not more.
If, if not more?
Yes.
And if, if that's the case, I almost feel like this strategic planning committee should be added to our list of committees.
Sure.
I would agree with that.
So we could add the strategic planning committee, so I, uh, we would, that would kind of round out our list of committees. And, and I'll be frank, like, you know, there's, there's one committee that I've been on for two years that I, I have never been called to a meeting. I've, I've never been called to a professional development meeting. Is, is that a committee that, that meets, that, that I don't know about? Um, is that a committee that's necessary for us to, to appoint people to? Uh, and I think these are good questions to answer before we finalize our listing.
Okay.
So could we have Dustin get us a list of the committees that are required? And then which ones we, we want? And then could we have a.
Responsibilities.
Could we have a spreadsheet created with background of the ones, and then we could each put in yes or no, we're interested in? Okay.
Thank you, Chelsea.
A, a layout so we can say, yes, we're interested online, and then, then the information will be there and we can sort of look at it and.
I'll create a different table and you guys can just quote who's interested.
We're already on an existing committee, we don't have to comment on that and say we want to remain on it, we're just like, I'm on three committees that I like being on, so that's fine, I don't have to go on there.
I'll just put your name down.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm, so, so my suggestion would be, um, right in line with what John just said, and thank you, Chelsea, for sending that out. For each one of us, uh, to the extent that you want to, look at the committees, dig into them, I mean, most of us have been here at least a year, and some of these folks a lot